Good evening and welcome to the October 13, 2015 School Committee meeting. We're happy to have you with us. This meeting is being recorded by East Hampton Media. The school committee would like to recognize and thank Tim Riley of East Hampton Media for taping tonight's production. East Hampton Media, channels 191, 192, 193, is looking for volunteers. If anyone is interested in helping to tape city government meetings, please contact Kathy Lynch at (413) 203-1360. I'd also like to mention that East Hampton Media is going to be hosting debates for the school committee candidates coming up this week on Wednesday at 6:00 PM. Half of the candidates will be debating and have an opportunity for discussion. And the second half of the candidates will be having a debate on Thursday at 6:00 PM. So stay tuned for those debates and meet the candidates for school committee. Superintendent Follinsby, do you have some announcements for us?
I do. The next school committee meetings are October 27th, November 10th, and December 8th. Meetings will begin at 6:30 PM. There's a half day of school on Thursday and Friday, October 22nd and 23rd, due to parent teacher conferences. There is no school on Tuesday, November 3rd, due to city elections and Teacher Professional Development Day. There is no school on Wednesday, November 11th, due to Veterans Day. There is no school on Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, November 25th, 26th, and 27th, due to Thanksgiving break. There's a half day of school on Friday, December 11th, due to Teacher Professional Development. And there is no school Thursday, December 24th, through the end of December, due to Christmas, New Years, and winter break. Students will return to school on Monday, January 4th, 2016. And I do have announcements about a few events that are going to be taking place in our schools. I thought everyone would like to hear about them. So tonight is Maple Curriculum Parent Night, and it's held at the high school. I believe it started at 6:30. STEP, Students and Teachers Engaged with Parents, that meeting is tonight at 6 o'clock at White Brook. And everyone, anyone who's interested in joining that STEP group certainly should get in touch with Principal, Mayor Dithbelis. Friday the 4th, or this coming Friday, the 4th graders from Center Peppin are joining seniors at the Council on Aging to hear a presentation on fingerprinting. Sort of a, an attempt for some collaborations between the Council on Aging and our elementary school children. Just a reminder, I think you probably have all heard, that the Yappy Valley Community Dog Show is Saturday, October 17th, at Nanotuck Park. And Fun Friday at White Brook occurs on October 23rd. And October 24th is Make a Difference Day at Center Peppin. And parents will be working on cleaning up the playground and sprucing up other areas of the two schools. So any parents who'd like to join the Make a Difference Day, I know they would be happy to have you attend. And the Apple a Day 5K Race, I'm sure you've seen some signs for that, is November 1st, with proceeds going to the elementary schools. So we've got a lot going on these couple months. And that's all.
Very good. It looks as though we do not have any correspondence for this evening, so we'll move on to gifts.
So I move that we please vote to accept with gratitude and appreciation the following gifts to East Hampton High School for Connecting Activities, $500 from the Helping Hand Society, $50 from Flurry Lumber Company, $50 from Old Colony Package Store, $50 from East Hampton Village Pizza, $50 from Mantis Graphics, $50 from Taylor Real Estate, $65 from Richards Fuel &amp; Heating Incorporated, $50 from East Hampton Animal Hospital, $50 from North Hampton Veterinary Clinic, $50 from Biggie's Supermarket, $50 from Thomas M. Cleary Jr., DDS, $50 from Webster Hook Incorporated, DBA Webster's Fish Hook, and $50 from WWC Incorporated.
Second.
I have one question, I don't know if, who can explain, but the Connecting Activities reference, is that a particular?
Um...
I saw that, and sorry I didn't ask in advance.
Yeah, I should know. Connecting Activities. I think it's one of our, I don't want to say. I have, I think I know what it is, but I'm not going to say till I have the exact facts.
Okay, well...
We'll have to find out.
All right.
We'll have that for the next meeting.
Thank you. So, okay.
There's a motion on the floor, and there is a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. We are very grateful.
Can I add one item to this? Even though we can't formally vote to accept the gift tonight, I have an anonymous donation from a member in support of the East Hampton School Committee to provide financial aid for students who are involved in foreign travel programs that are going on at the high schools, including the one that's going on right now. So, I'll turn this over. I know we'll acknowledge it and vote to accept it at our next meeting.
Very good. Thank you very much. Okay, we're moving on to the public speak portion of our meeting. At this time, we would invite anyone who would like to come and speak with us. To do so, we'd ask you to come to the podium and tell us who you are. And we're glad you're with us.
Thank you very much. My name is Chris Abel. I'm here tonight on behalf of the East Hampton Education Association. I just wanted to stop in and invite all of you to an event that we're hosting on October 21st, from 6 to 8:00 PM, at the Eastworks Community Building. The event is a test-the-test event. It's providing anyone within the community the opportunity to take sample questions from MCAS and Park Exams, and then sit at a table and have a discussion afterwards as to their experience taking the test.
Interesting.
I have some flyers right here for everybody.
Did you say that it was, it was at 6:00 PM?
6 to 8:00 PM, yes.
6 to 8:00.
Are you like grading these tests? I mean, that's, I'm like, you probably shouldn't have told us what it is. Once I heard it's a test, I'm like, oh, I don't want to go. I totally get it. This is extremely worthwhile, and it's really good.
It's really, I mean, there's so much in the news these days about high stakes testing, and a lot of parents, they know their kids are taking these tests, yet they don't exactly entirely know what they are. So it's just simply an opportunity for people to sit at a roundtable, groups of, I believe, eight to 10, take sample questions of both tests at various grade levels, both disciplines, and then discuss their experiences.
That's great.
Okay.
Are there any on the flyer?
Any questions?
That's great. I, we've often talked before about how the school committee should try out some of these test questions so that we can better understand the experience of the students. So I hope, I hope I can attend, I hope others can attend. It sounds like it's a great opportunity. Thank you.
Excellent. We hope we can see you there.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to come speak with us?
I'm Tamara Smith. I live at 103 Strong Street. And I just wanted to say how much I am in favor of the intergenerational linkages between the elementary school and the senior center. You know, I'm a city counselor, but really tonight I'm wearing my parenting hat, and also, I'm a gerontologist. And I work at the college level, trying to encourage students at that level to start working with the elderly. And research has shown that if children are not exposed to the elderly and working together as children prior to the age of 18, that they likely will avoid working with this population as adults. So when we see that the baby boomers are aging, and even in East Hampton, we have 24% of our population over the age of 60, I really feel that as a gerontologist, these intergenerational linkages are really vital to our community and to our students. So I was really happy to see that, and just wanted to acknowledge it. And that's all I have to say tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for being here.
That's great information to know. Thank you. And we'll, is there anyone else for public speak? No? Okay. We'll then move on to our finance subcommittee report.
Nothing new.
Okay. And do we have a policy subcommittee report?
No report.
Okay. Just in time. We have Wendy Blumenthal, who is our Collaborative for Educational Services representative.
Hi.
And we're wondering if by any chance you have an update for us?
I don't. I forgot to email you guys from the last meeting. But again, all their, Collaborative is great about putting all their stuff online, so I will email, should I email you, Sue, or to everybody, just to you? Okay. I'll send you the director's report. It's always, I find the most helpful piece of information.
Okay.
I apologize respectfully to the, my colleagues and to the public for being late. Just coming from class.
We're glad you could make it. Thank you very much. Okay. And next, we have Alexis White with us. She is our student representative on the school committee, and she's going to provide us with a student activities update.
Um, in East Hampton High, I know recently and soon, we'll be having our homecoming dance on October 23rd, the same night as the White Brook Fun Friday. Um, we have, yes, we have our Spirit Weeks coming up. We normally have Spirit Weeks right before the dance, so it will be that week. We have our French Foreign Exchange, what's it called? It's just happening. The program is happening. I have my French Foreign Exchange student here with me. Should we go up to the podium? I can introduce you.
Mallory up, so she can say hello. Then you get to be on camera, Mallory.
All your friends back home will see you. No, I'm just joking.
This is being straight back to France, right now, as we speak.
This is Mallory. She's from Brittany.
Right?
Yeah. France, did you want to say anything? Just like, hello? Hello? There's 16 students that are here with us this week, until Wednesday of next week, when they leave. And that's about it. Thank you.
Welcome.
Welcome. We're glad you're here.
Welcome. And you're having a reception tomorrow at 2:15?
Yep, there's a reception at 2:15 at East Hampton High School for all the students. And I believe that's it.
Very exciting.
Yes.
Thank you very much, Alexis. Um, we'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Okay. So I did give you more detailed information about our student enrollment figures, based on the October 1st reports. You can see that there has been, I presented it in two ways, the original reports and then a consolidation of enrollment numbers from 2013 to this current school year. As you can see, our enrollment has been dropping some from 2013, 14, which historically has been happening across Western Massachusetts, unfortunately. The enrollments in all districts in Western Massachusetts are dropping. Fewer children are being born, and the population is aging, just as Counselor Smith mentioned.
Just as we are.
What was that?
Just as we are.
Yes, and we being a couple of them. At any rate, so I did want to give you a little more background about some of the changes from 14, 15 to 15, 16. In grade, from grade four to grade five, those students who were in grade four moving into grade five, there was a decrease of two students. And, and that was because, actually, two moved away from East Hampton, out of East Hampton. One student moved to Hilltown, but then there were other students who moved in, so it was a net difference of two. From grade five, and I'm just going to concentrate on students that have left our district. From grade five to grade six, there is a difference of six students. Two of our students went to Choice, one to South Hadley, and one to JFK. And five went to Hilltown. So again, that's more than the six that you see there, but that's how many we lost. Grade eight to grade nine, we had five who moved out of East Hampton, and who, two who choiced to Hampshire Regional. Grade 10 to a grade 11, we had three who moved out of East Hampton. Grade 11 to grade 12, we had five who moved out of East Hampton, one who went to a private school, and one whose parents began homeschooling with that child. And there were two others that Principal Burke was not able to get information on for me. So, any questions on any of that? You can see also the enrollments into Smith Vocational. The students who go to C-Tech are included in our regular enrollment, because in our school for half the day. You do see that our preschool, our early childhood program, the numbers are increasing. And that's because we started some new programs in the preschool, one of them being a full-day program for some of our students and their parents. So we're excited about that, and have plans to expand that with the hope that these families who are here for our preschools and their children will stay with us through the duration of their school careers. Any questions?
Well, I was just going to comment, I mean, even though the total enrollment is dropping, I mean, our kindergarten and grade ones are big.
They are.
Both of them right now.
So we can hope that that's a trend for East Hampton.
That's what it looks like.
Yeah.
At the next meeting, I don't, I don't expect this level of detail now, and I apologize for not sending this in advance, but I was struck by what seemed to me to be good news about a crucial transition, that the numbers from grade four to five, as we move from, right, from 2013 to 2014, there was a difference of three, and then a difference of two. And that, I think, is impressive, because I know that that's a time when all students are changing buildings. And I also was curious whether there was an explanation to the sort of one-time blip from kindergarten to grade one, the 2013 to 20, 2014 to 2014, 2015 year seems to be an outlier. And I didn't know if there was a particular explanation. And again, I think at a future discussion, it would be useful to know whether that was idiosyncratic, or whether that was due to the, due to the arrival of Hilltown.
So, Peter, could you...
When you look at 2013, 2014 kindergarten?
2013, 14, yes, yes.
And then 2014, 2015, first grade?
Right.
That, and my hypothesis is that that is due to the, to the charter school that was given a charter to share the values of rural education by housing their school in an industrial park, moving into the community. There's something about honoring the original mission of your charter that I think is absent in that particular example. But if, if that's the case, it would be useful to know that. And I know we're going to talk about charter school later, so.
And I will get that information for you. I do remember that there were a number of families who moved in that year as well, but I'll get all the details.
Right. And I also wanted to point out that the grade eight to nine, again, where there's a building shift, the numbers here are quite small. We're talking about not just single digit, but less than 4% in one case, percentage change in the enrollment. And with the availability of Smith Voke and other opportunities, that seems to me to be a sign that at both of the key transition points, from elementary to middle and from middle to high school, that the efforts that we're making to sustain the enrollment there seem to be working. That's what the evidence suggests.
I believe that's true. Okay, any other questions? Comments?
Thank you for providing us.
Certainly. I wanted to give you also this evening, an update on the School Building Authority, what's been going on there. They met on September 30th. Director of Business Services Dale Doran and I went to the board meeting. Unfortunately, we didn't get there in time, because it was that day when it was pouring rain, and it took us four hours to get to Boston. We got there just after the vote occurred, but they were nice enough to come out and let us know at that point that the vote had been approved. And the vote was to enter our district into the feasibility study phase of the, of the School Building Authority's process and procedure. So this phase involves the district utilizing MSBA-specific procurement processes to procure a team of professionals to work with the district. And the professionals would be an owner's project manager and a designer. And they will be chosen to work with the district in developing a feasibility study for a building project. So the scope of the feasibility study approved by MSBA, the Massachusetts School Building Authority, is to examine three different options. Option one is a renovation or new construction of Maple School. Maple School was the, the project put forth by the school district in its statement of interest. Every statement of interest has to have one building put forth, and then after that, you have an opportunity to talk with the board about other possibilities. So that was option one. Option two is consolidation of grades pre-K to four. And option, option three, and a structure for that. And option, option three is consolidation of grades pre-K to eight. So once the feasibility team is in place, they will begin design, designs for those three options. The community will have many opportunities to, to see these designs and to be educated along with the School Building Committee, who will also be an integral part of this. And Mayor Kadger, is there anything that you wanted to add on that?
Oh, yes, thank you Nancy. So as Nancy was saying, and I can vouch for that day, the rainy day, because I had a meeting, one of the rare meetings with the West, with the Mayor's Association, they're always in the Boston area, ours was here. And for a change, they came to Western Mass, and it took them five hours to get here. And we're three hours late for our meeting, but we unfortunately had to wait. So that, that day, the rain came down, there were accidents everywhere, so the pipe was jammed, so, you know, I feel bad that you went that far at the crack of dawn. But the, the good news is that they took the vote and everything was great. So in the meantime, they are very expedient, by the way. So I received all the documents from the Mass School Building Authority, and we have already, which by the way, means that our eligibility period has been satisfied, and we've completed it. And we have been completing all the steps ahead of the deadlines. Not too much, not too much excitement going on here. So in the meantime, since that meeting, they mailed me the documents for the, for the feasibility study agreement, which I have in turn already sent back to them, and along with all the criteria that was needed to go along with them. So the next step, and, and I actually, I just received an email from Sarah Blatch, from the MSBA, you know, expressing her acceptance of our fast response to the, getting the agreements back to her. And that the next step is that we will go, be going into what they call, I hadn't heard this expression, Module Two, which is the forming of the project team. And we did, I believe, as of today, get together with everybody, we've been asking everybody for an appropriate date where we could meet for the School Building Committee. So we have a date for that. And in the meantime, if anybody's interested, I did receive another interest, even though, you know, we had a strict deadline to set up that School Building Committee, and did advertise it at our public hearings, and of course, on our website and postings. But we still want to tell people that if you are interested in being on the School Building Committee, please again, just send your letter of interest, you know, to me or to Nancy, and, and we will, we will hold it. We know that in the future, there are going to be, you know, people that can't maybe not make all of the meetings, and we probably will need to add a few more people. So it's never too late, and please, you know, just forward any of your interests, letters of interest to us. And, and I think our first meeting of the School Building Committee will really just to inform them of everything that, you know, has transpired, and to start getting together for meetings. So again, I think that the excitement is, we are ahead of schedule. And because we meet the deadlines before the deadlines, it moves us ahead, so we don't have to keep waiting and waiting. So they're, I couldn't be, they're very impressed with East Hampton, but I couldn't be any more impressed with Mass School Building Authority. They are very, very, very efficient, and couldn't help, they cannot assist you enough. So it's, it's really been a great experience.
Good news.
I don't know if anyone else has any questions, but...
That's great.
We actually are going to have a telephone conference either next week?
Yeah, not next week, it'll probably be the week after that. And we will, we will want to have the school business manager, Dale, Superintendent Nancy, our finance director, and myself on the conference call. And I think that's where they're going to discuss forming of the, of the team.
Right.
So, so they had asked us for, to give them three dates that were convenient for, you know, for everybody, and then send the dates to them, and they would pick from there. So we're on it.
That's great.
So exciting.
Yeah, it is very exciting. Very exciting. Okay. The last item on my report is the charter, raising the charter cap. The hearing that occurred today at the State House before the Joint Commission on Education. So what I wanted to report to you is that the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents encouraged its members to either appear to testify at the hearing, or to send in a written testimony. And we saw Tom Scott, our executive director, last week, and at that point, he said that he thought that he had enough superintendents from across the state being there to testify, because I was willing to go and do that, but asked if we would send in a letter of testimony. So I worked in collaboration with Peter Gunn, our school committee member, and Mayor Kadger, and we composed a, a letter of testimony. I delivered it to MASSS, and they made copies for all of the members of the joint committee, and ensured us that they would, that our letter would be read. I did send out copies to all of you. And, and the MTA also has been working very hard, and Chris, I don't know if you want to say something about that too, but you're welcome to come up here, in, in trying to send Governor Baker a message of the impact on raising the charter cap, particularly for us here in Western Massachusetts. We can speak to that. We can't speak to what it will do in the eastern part of the state, but we can speak to what it will do here in, through Massachusetts, so.
I mean, obviously, we all know that the expansion of charter schools could be devastating to the public schools within this region, as we've already seen impacts in East Hampton. I just wanted right now to take a moment on behalf of the MTA to thank Superintendent Follinsby, Mr. Gunn, and Mayor Kadger for your time writing that letter. It was, it was incredibly well-written, and the response, from what I heard, was overwhelming for, for what you guys did, and it was a very powerful document. Thank you very much.
Let's hope it's heard, then. Thank you, Chris. Any questions on that, or any other comments?
Well, again, I thank Peter for all the time you put into that, and Superintendent Follinsby. I, I think that the message we are just trying to get out, that surprises me that we're even struggling to prove how costly and crippling the, this, these funds are. You know, when I hear comments that charter school doesn't cost the public schools or any money at all, because they're 100% reimbursed, it's, it amazes me. So I think putting this together, and also, you know, going over figures, trying to show how just, just the changes in a few years, and again, this is just sticking to charter. So it, I, it seems almost incredible that people really don't understand this. They don't. And it's not, it's really not a difficult process. But, you know, the amounts that, that, that we could be using for our public education versus funding, to me, what's close to a private education, are, are very, very, very serious. And if we could just have those funds, and we've been working on a lot of, a lot of issues. I know Nancy and I have been working on this for quite a while, and we're also working with a representative and our state senator on not just all of these, and I know, thank you for forwarding this to Senator Homicent, but not just, not just the figures on this, but also the choice part. And if, to us, you know, the different ways that this could, this could proceed, if the state agrees that this is a law and we have to abide by it, then they should fund it, and not fund it out of our Chapter 70 funds. And the fact that they reimburse us is not what we pay out. And I think this pretty, really pretty well depicts this and sums this out, but what we receive in, but what we give out. So we are funding the schools. At our expense.
And I think, just as an example, in 2012, 2013, the cost to the city for charter schools was $577,044. Now that's taking into account the reimbursement from the state.
Thank you.
And in 2014, 2015, the cost to the city has jumped to $783,142. And again, taking into consideration the reimbursement to the city, so. So you can see that there is an increasing cost to our district, which makes it more and more difficult for us to provide the services and the programs and the staff that we need for the students who are in our community schools here in East Hampton.
Exactly. So when we're at a loss for over $750,000, how can you say that they don't cost us anything, that they are being reimbursed? They're not. And I think this is the proof.
Yeah, you guys clearly did your homework. In a town the size of East Hampton, and the struggles you see every day in a budget, and Nancy, what you could do with 780-plus thousand dollars in this city is unimaginable.
Exactly. So I'm really, I think this letter is extremely well-done, and again, I thank both of you for, you know, preparing the preparation. But I want you to know that this is something we've been working on a long time, and other ways to also, you know, what looks like what we're gonna have to do, what we're trying to present is to the speaker, is to, I think the only way we can go from here is to actually have a bill that just funds these, again, directly from the state, without our involvement, and our 70 is our 70, and their 70 goes to them. And somehow get us out of this crippling loop. So we, you know, I just want everyone to know that this is something that we have not let go, and we've been very loud with it, as has every organization that Nancy's involved in, the Teachers Association and the Mayor's Association, so.
In addition to the Mass Association of School Committees as well.
Exactly. Exactly. So everybody's on it.
I would, I thank you both for the work. I was asked to proof the letter, and it was tremendous when I received it. I hope I added something of value to it. I would emphasize that when we talk about three-quarters of a million dollars, what we're talking about are 15 educators. And we've had presentations here, and this is where the theory runs into the reality of the financing. We've had presentations where we have provided reading coaches, literacy coaches, math support specialists, and other professional educators in our school system. We've seen the results on the tests the state holds us accountable to. So we know that with this money, we can make a difference. I know what private education is. I believe there's a role for private education in the state. I believe private education can provide financial aid. If the state wants to provide financial aid from the whole Commonwealth for people who seek private education, that's a different animal. But I would, you know, I feel badly for the families that are forced to choose between what they think is best for their own child or their children, and what is best for their community. And the way the state has set this up, it forces a parent who's making that decision to, in effect, ask the community to subsidize them for living there. And that, to me, makes no sense on the economic ground. Somebody pays $3,000 or $4,000 in property taxes and then receives a benefit from the town that's larger than that, all while benefiting from the tremendous emergency services that we have, this beautiful, you know, hub of activity across the street from the building here, all the tremendous things that are available in this city. Essentially, we're paying people to live here and to enjoy that under those circumstances. Beyond the economic argument, though, I think one of the things that the letter pointed out and the research that you did is that the population that is taking advantage of charter schooling is not a representation of the demographic of the city, nor are the students representative of the demographic. It is a disproportionately wealthier-than-average family that's taking advantage of this. And often, the children who, for whom educational expenses are the highest, are those for whom families elect to stay here because we do a really good job. We don't lock people in a closet for a timeout. There is a charter school in the valley that thought that that was educationally sound. Practice, it's not. It's not sound practice under any circumstances. And so the last piece that I would add, beyond the dilemma that it forces those families, is that when you divorce communities from their public school, you undermine one of the most important institutions we have that define a community. I think when we all think back to what we love about the town that we grew up in, so often we come back to talking about our experience in the public school system there. The kids that we grew up with, our neighbors, kids from across town, the teachers, the coaches, those are people who we are, by design, by Governor Baker's design in promoting this, actively eroding. So communities are just gonna be places where people live. That's all. They're just gonna be administrative units where people live, but they're not going to be the same kinds of communities that they are when the funding is there that makes the public schools work the way we've seen them work when they're well-funded. And then in addition to providing great education, they also become the glue that holds a community together. So I think the letter's tremendous. I hope we're beginning to turn the tide. I'm sorry about some of the places that we have to go in this argument to get people to sit up and say, oh, well now I understand the numbers. You know, I don't pay as much in property taxes to the city as you pay to the Hilltown Charter School or to the Chinese Immersion School or to these other schools, but maybe that's the level of education that we have to go to. And then we can let those folks, you know, perhaps express to the governor and to the representatives that they want to continue to attend those schools, but that they want to find a funding formula that doesn't rob their home community. And that's what we have right now. So I hope people who are listening will inform themselves, take advantage of the work that the mayor and the superintendent have done in gathering all of this data, and add your voice. You may think that charter schools are a great thing. That's debatable. I think the argument really comes down to how they're financed, and I don't think there's any debate at all. It's devastating, we need to change it, and we need to change it for all of the children. It's our job as a committee to advocate for. So I hope we will continue to push and that we'll make some progress on this.
Thank you very much. And that ends my report.
Thank you. I think it's great that you take the time to share that information with everybody.
Okay, moving on to our minutes from the September 29th regular session meeting. Do we have a motion for approval?
Motion to approve the minutes from September 29th.
Second.
All those in favor? How many abstentions?
I would like to abstain.
Okay, one more time, how many abstentions?
There's three.
Three? Okay, thank you very much. Warrants and payroll.
I guess since I landed in front of them. They're mine.
They were waiting for you.
They were waiting for you.
They were calling for you.
You asked me if you wanted to switch seats.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I was gonna slide those over if I switched seats.
I was sure. Sue, can I just clarify with you? I see up here a budget transfer request, is that?
We'll do that last.
Right, we'll do that last.
Oh.
Yes, it's on that, it's on the updated sheet.
Where are my pinks?
There we go. Yeah, I didn't pull them out.
Older.
Wendy is filling in for our secretary, Laura Scott.
I am Norma Laura.
Susie Scott.
Okay. I move to approve the school payroll dated October 15th, 2015, in the amount of $455,876.69.
Second.
All those in favor? Abstentions?
And the last one is I move to approve the accounts payable authorization for payment dated October 15th, 2015, in the amount of $106,433.13.
Second.
All those in favor?
That would be it?
That's it? Okay.
I move that we approve the request that the following items be declared as surplus equipment. Thirty desktop computers that are over eight years old, two metal laptop carts, it's only the carts, not the laptops. These are carts that have served to move those computers around for over eight years. And then eight printers that are cost prohibitive to repair. These have no residual value, and they will be disposed via proper recycling, and this is from our technology director, Ashley Barstow.
Second.
All those in favor of disposing of the surplus equipment?
Aye.
Very good, thank you very much.
Motion to approve out-of-state field trip request by, I'm gonna, I always mess up the name.
Ms. Mango.
Ms. Mango. I never know when this is a Ms. Mango, to go to Ellis Island in the Statue of Liberty.
All those in favor? Motion passes.
And then a motion for a budget transfer request. Now, there's a series of line items. Do we need to vote on each line item? As, there you go, I like that language, as submitted.
Okay.
Wouldn't it be great to use that on those? Wouldn't have to say all those numbers. Now you say.
As submitted.
Those two after you read them. Okay, so motion, I move that we approve the budget transfer request as submitted. Just so folks know, we are talking about a total.
It's not to your bank account.
A total amount, it looks to me, of approximately $12,000, spread out over a dozen or more accounts. So these are relatively small amounts of number, and this is designed to align the available funds for intended purchases. So it simply moves money from a line item in our budget to another fund number, sorry, for example, 01114515041608902, something just as long. It just means we're getting the money in the right place so that we have the authority to spend it properly.
You said no more than 12,000. You meant per line item, correct?
Yeah, there's a lot more.
Oh, yeah, sorry, 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 yeah, sorry.
Just to clarify.
Yes.
Okay.
There's one line item that is 11,502.95, correct?
Okay.
So there's no individual line item that is greater than 12,000. I may have misspoken, I apologize.
No, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay, that was a motion.
Second.
Yes. Okay, is there a second for that motion?
Second.
Second. All those in favor of this budget transfer request?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much.
And I don't know, I apologize, I know we talked about this. Our next scheduled meeting is the 27th. Was today the last day to register to vote? Or tomorrow? I thought it was tomorrow, so thank you for correcting that. I just would urge anyone who happens to roll by this, if you haven't, it is, it's such an extraordinary privilege to be able to participate in the selection of the people who serve the community in the office of city council, school committee, mayor, all of the different offices. I urge anyone who's out there, I know that the city clerk's office will be open tomorrow morning at eight, right? And it stays open until?
Eight to six on Wednesdays.
Eight to six. So if you can.
Yeah, the last day of registration, they're usually open longer, but maybe because it's fallen on a Wednesday.
Yeah, some places it's staying open as late as eight, but you could call and check and.
And there's a, we had a big billboard outside the, or sign, outside the door.
An absentee ballots are now available as well.
Yes.
For those who won't be able to be here. Okay.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much.